So, to tell everybody a little bit about myself. My name is Chuck Callahan and I'm from Talbot County. Been here all my life. You know, mother and father grew up in St. Michael's and went to Easton School, graduated in 85. One of my biggest accomplishments, I feel like, that I've done in with the community and stuff, I'm a volunteer fire department member and I'm a life member. So, I was an EMT and I got in in 84. And I'm not as active as I am now, or active as I was, but it was really a big part of my life being a member of the fire department and it's a big family. So, and I'm also been, when I got into the fire department, I joined the Elks and I've been in the Elks for 26 years. So, that was a really good accomplishment, too. I have two sons, 20 and 23. My youngest one, Clark, he graduated last year and he works for me now. So, I, I'm a businessman. I've got three businesses. I'm a contractor and I got a mill shop and I've got a home audit service. So, I'm in the business world. I sort of interact with a lot of the business guys and I feel like with the council and stuff, I bring a lot of experience in the business community because a lot of the guys reach out to me and discuss on some of the stuff that the council has put together for the last four years and stuff. And I can give them a little bit of insight on, you know, what direction we're going and it helps their business. So, it's all about, you know, reaching out to them and helping them. So, a lot of things that I really am passionate about, as far as the CTE program, everybody knows it's really quote, "the vote tech center." And that was really one of the big things I ran in on last time and I'm still heavily involved in it. So, that's really one thing that I'm very passionate about. I'm on the board of the new school, helping them out, getting budgets together and stuff like that. And that's been kicked off this summer, so that's a big accomplishment. You know, and I'm heavily involved with permits inspections, planning and zoning, getting things. A lot of people really rely on when they call me, what's going on. We're working on 190 now. That's such a big deal and a big accomplishment that Mary Kay and her whole team has put together and it's taken many, many months, probably about a year to do that. So, am I done? There's no warning. Okay. So, but I'm here and I'd like to have your vote and I'll do a good job for you and I'm very passionate about the job and I'll work extremely hard for you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for coming out tonight. My name is Frank DiVillio. I'm running for Talbot County Council because I'm fully vested and bought into this community. I'm a lifelong member here. I was born and raised in Easton, born at Easton Memorial Hospital, the same hospital where my two kids were born. I've got my hands pretty much in everything around here. I've spent a lot of time getting to know different groups of people. I feel like I have a good grasp of what the farmers are looking for because I've tilled fields before with them. I've worked in chicken houses with farmers before helping them out. I've got a good idea what watermen need because I've actually worked with commercial watermen and hand tong for oysters. I own a small business up in Centerville. I'm a State Farm insurance agent, so I've got a good idea what the business owner in this community needs. I also have two young boys that I love. They're eight and five years old. They're going to Chaplaindistic Elementary School. Great public school system, the same one that I went through. It's also the same school system where my mother taught for 25 years and retired from. So, I understand both sides of the age spectrum. I know what the kids need with parks and rec in the schools, but I also know that we need to keep a low tax bracket, or a low tax base, so that people like my mother, who's retired on a pension, can stay in the house that she loves and wants to retire in and stay there. So, I hope that I can earn your vote. I know I'm a little bit shorter winded than a lot of the other candidates, but I've been around here my whole life. I've really tried to reach out to as many groups as I possibly can to understand what your concerns are and I think together I can put together a good plan and really make this county better for the next generation to come. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Gezzi and my husband Keith and I came to Talbot County over a decade ago and made Talbot County our home. I'm running for Talbot County Council because I care deeply about our county, as Frank had also suggested. And I also have the business, the budget, and the collaborative skills to help the government do an even better job for our county and for our people. I have the time and the work ethic and the business experience to work on the county budget and ensure that the taxpayers' money is well spent. My four priorities are responsible growth, good paying jobs, an excellent education, and public safety. I want to talk about two because I'm not going to have time, even though I would like to borrow Frank's time. The first two. I appreciate that well-managed growth over a period of many years has made our county an attractive place to live, not only for those who have spent generations here, but for those of us who have chose this place and love it and want to live here. We can guarantee the health of our economy here by guaranteeing the health of our ecosystem. In the not-so-distant future, the county is going to be considering decisions about the extension of sewer and the evaluation of growth allocations. I want to be sure to be on the county council and help make the best decision for you, the voter. Our economy depends also on tourism. Tourists come to explore our towns and they spend millions of dollars. The underlying charm that we can all enjoy must be sustained and can be through responsible growth. My priority is for Talbot County to thrive and this is one of my major areas of expertise. We can achieve this through focused business sectors and vocational professions. Our business sectors today in the county are agriculture, tourism, financial services, and healthcare services. In fact, I just sat down with Ken Cozel today at the hospital to talk with him about their plans for the future. We also have a good start in environmental sciences and cybersecurity. These sectors can provide job opportunities for our young people whose families want to keep the families in Talbot County when they're drawn away to other counties for jobs. In fact, in my past experience, I have created over 400 jobs in the Washington DC area. In healthcare device companies, we started 10 companies, and XM Satellite Radio in the satellite communications area. I can bring that expertise to Talbot County. On education, okay, and closing, I'm going to then take two more, yes. Okay. Your vote is paramount to my success. Thank you.
... a third term on the council. It's been a very enjoyable time, I can say that for the most part. We've had some difficult times along the way. We've gone through times of constraint when we had to make some drastic cuts, $1.8 million to the school board. We had to flat fund a lot of our departments. We had to lay people off. So, we went through some very difficult times eight, nine years ago. Mr. Bartlet can attest to that. He was on the council with us during that time. So, we weathered that storm and we came out of it together and we were able now to see some progress and we were able now to see some growth in our economy. We were able to hire some people back. We were able to put some of our departments back at full staff and that's a plus because these departments are here to serve you. And I must, I must say that we have some of the best department heads by far anywhere in the state. County engineer Ray Clark, our county planner and Mary Kay Vertary, our county manager, Ms. Andy Hollis. These people I would stack up against any other department heads in the state of Maryland. And I'm not saying that just for just, I really mean that. These are dedicated public servants and you should be proud to have them on board. And let me not forget your sheriff back there, Joe Gamble. You know, Joe came on board with gangbusters. He had a plan. He, I think Joe probably signaled the opioid crisis before anybody else. He knew it was out there. He knew it was coming, probably from his intel with the state police. Was able to gavel out some board, got the Purple Project on board and hats off to Joe for doing that. The council jumped on board with that. We opened up two safe stations here, one right here at our 911 center, the second one down in the St. Michael's Police Station. And those safe stations are there for persons who need help with their addiction. They can come into those centers, they can get the information they need. Well, we're partnered with the Crisis Intervention Teams. Those teams will come in, they will assist them in getting inpatient treatment if they need it. I'll tell you some more later.
I'm really pleased to be running for my third term on the Talbot County Council. My husband and I are small business owners here for the last 16 years and I have two sons who graduated Easton High School. One of whom is out in the audience, the other one's working. My values and principles have never changed from day one. I continue to believe that decisions, whether they are spending, zoning, or environmental, must serve the majority of citizens of Talbot County. Since I'm a native, I have a special interest in maintaining the character of this very special place. As those of you who know me realize, I remain committed to preserving the rural atmosphere of our county, encouraging appropriate economic development, prioritizing public safety, and providing effective and needed services to the residents of the county, all while maintaining a stable financial base and keeping our taxes low. Each year I deconstruct the budget to maintain a clear picture of current and future spending. I look at zoning and development matters not only from a land use perspective, but also from a numbers perspective. What impact will zoning changes have on property tax, cost of county services, and public safety? It's my responsibility to dig into the details of every issue and listen to all opinions until I know what the impact will be on our community. It is vital to listen to the loud voices, but it is also important to listen to those who speak more quietly and privately about their individual concerns. The council must weigh them equally because the voices that you hear publicly may not reflect the views of the majority. I've been elected by this council each of the last four years to be your legislative representative for Talbot County at Mako. I've also been elected by Mako to be on their Board of Directors. And the seniority credibility and relationships that I have built there have resulted in many subcommittee assignments, including two years on the Education Committee and two years on Budget and Tax, where I'll be the incoming chairman next year. Being able to impact positions that directly affect our county and influence legislation, I believe, has expanded my effectiveness as your councilwoman. And one of my ongoing efforts is to demonstrate to the state that it needs to increase support for education. The current formula on which funding is based needs to be modified as it unfairly penalizes Talbot County. I am not supportive of an increase in income tax and remain committed to protecting the earnings of our hard-working citizens and retirees on a fixed income by not increasing that tax burden. One of the many challenges facing us is what to do about our property tax revenue cap. I proposed in March adding a penny a year for four years, eliminating CPIU, and changing the existing cap from two to two and a half percent. And the citizens need to decide if they want the county to increase services and how much, if any, they're willing to pay. While there will always be challenging issues to address, as long as we have council members who are willing to engage in informed discussion and, and, sorry, about preserving the character of this very special place for future generations and what actions will benefit all those who call Talbot County their home, I am hopeful that we can continue to resolve matters in a way that's fair to all citizens. I welcome your support of my candidacy and I make the same promises I have made to you before. I will ask questions, I will listen to you, and I will always maintain my integrity and vote to support your best interests. Thank you.
Many of you already know me. I'm Jennifer Williams. I was born in Washington DC. I grew up in Montgomery County, Maryland. I graduated from the Sybil Friends School, the University of Maryland in College Park, and the University of Baltimore School of Law. I went to law school at night and worked full-time to get that law degree. I've been on the council the last three and a half years. The past two years I've been the president. It is a unique honor to be chosen by your fellow council members to represent them as their leader and I appreciate that leadership that they have given me. As Mr. Pack said, our county has some of the best people working for it that I've ever worked with in my entire life. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. We are blessed in Talbot County to have the quality of people doing the jobs they do for us each and every day. I could literally go on for an hour talking about them, but I don't have the time. I'm running for four major reasons. One, I want to make our county government continue to be more efficient and more effective. I want to see it more responsive to the citizens. I want to make sure that our taxes stay low while we're still providing necessary services and good education for our students. And I want to make sure we create and maintain viable economic opportunities throughout the county, so when our children grow up, they can stay here and don't need to move away to find a good paying job. One of the things we've done to make progress in the county is we've hired some really great department heads over the past four years. And again, I could go on for hours about some of the things they've done, but I just don't have the time tonight. By hiring good people and supporting them in their roles, we increase the efficiency and the effectiveness of our county government. And that's good for each of us because it saves the taxpayer a lot of money when jobs are being done effectively and efficiently. And with the leaders we're choosing as department heads who have a true customer service orientation, it's made a tremendous difference. As a leader, I lead by example. I show by my actions that I'm here to listen, to listen to the people of the county, and to assist the residents in their problems. A lot of that goes on behind the scenes, but it's going on. As a leader, I understand that you must be willing to listen, to negotiate, and to compromise in order to get anything done. There's nothing worse than the stalemate we see in Washington DC where elected leaders refuse to budge even a millimeter on their beliefs to try to get something accomplished. We don't need that in Talbot County. I draw on my quicker education, where I learned about the sense of the meeting, to listen to people, to come to a consensus. So, with that, I'd ask for your vote and let me keep continuing to make Talbot County a better place. Thank you.
Yes. Should be no surprise if I was born and raised a Democrat. Any surprises? I'll see you, Jack. Bush won, the term of Bush won changed my party over to be Republican.
No, I've never changed.
I need you to move up.
No, no, I have not.
Born and bred a Republican.
I've been a lifelong Republican.
I would say the budget. When I came on, when I first ran for office, we had dropped from $31 million to $19 million in income tax revenues in one year, about two years before I was on the council. So, the very first year I was there, and I'm going, I'm sorry, I'm going back eight years, but we had to make such drastic cuts. As Corey mentioned, we had to cut the schools, we had to cut our departments, and we had, we did a little bit of tax raises, which no Republican likes to do. And fortunately, the economy's gotten better and I think that we've been at least very fiscally conservative. I'm a little concerned about maybe the direction things are going now, but things are getting more expensive. So, that's why you're going to hear us talk about, you know, what we have to do with taxes. But the other thing that I really think is awesome is the tourism and economic development. They were two different departments, but I know I had mentioned that when we hired our tourism director, Cassandra Van Hooser, that we could really use her for economic development. And we pulled those departments together and that's been a real boon.
Well, I'll go back to something I said in my opening statement, and that is looking for department heads who understand the need for government employees to be responsive to the citizens, who understand the need to be effective and efficient. A prime example of that is Warren Edwards. We hired him as our superintendent of roads. Warren came in and immediately looked at the operation we had and came back to council and said, "Council, there are a number of things we can do in-house. We can save you money and we can do a better job and we can get it done more quickly than if we have to go to outside vendors." He also came to us with an idea. He wanted to issue permits for anyone to do work in a county right-of-way, somebody like Verizon or AT&amp;T who's coming in to run lines. The problem had been, these types of companies would come in and work alongside our roads and do damage. We didn't know who was there. We didn't know who did it. So, based on Warren's recommendation, we now issue a permit. Last year, we issued over 117 permits to outside vendors and in the process made $16,000 on permit fees. So, people like that, I'm very proud of finding. As Laura mentioned, economic development and tourism, combining those. The central booking unit, we've done a combination of the Sheriff's Department and the Department of Corrections. Prior to that, when a law enforcement officer arrested someone, they would have to babysit that prisoner until a court commissioner showed up, which often was six to eight hours. It took that law enforcement officer off the road doing the job they're hired to do, which is keeping us safe, and turned him into a babysitter. Now that we've put central booking into place, they can drop him off within minutes and be back out on the road. They're happy and every law enforcement officer I've talked to loves it. So, we've really been able to do some things to make this county more effective. It works better for the taxpayer and by doing that, we're saving taxpayer dollars.
Cassandra Van Hooser, Sam Cho Gay, and Ryan Snow. The best argument I've ever lost. And I readily admit that. I was not in favor of putting the departments together. I felt that we should keep economic development and tourism separate. They were two bodies of water, but not the same body of water. And these, these four, with Mr. Bartlet's help, you know, showed me the light and probably, again, one of the best arguments, and I've lost many with Maria, but Warren, one of the best arguments I've ever lost because these three individuals have been stormbusters. Again, what Jennifer was saying regarding our detention center. Doug Devenins and what he's doing to our detention center, you don't see it unless you're a visitor there. I hope none of you have been a visitor to our detention center. But our vivarial program would allow persons who are opioid addicted to get the help that they need, the medication they need prior to them exiting our facility. And then we also hired a transitional coordinator who will do what we call a warm handoff with that individual as they go into the community with a substance abuse counselor or a transitional house or back into their home, their actual residence, and make sure that they have the services they need to be successful in their recovery. We also hired within the last four years a classification officer. So, when the persons are coming in from seeing one of our clerks in the court, they're going to be processed in, but also we're going to look at more than just their criminal history, but we're going to look at their substance abuse, their family history, their job history, and try to find out their assets and their deficits, if you would. What do we need to build upon with this individual and what do we need to, what assets do we already have in place that we can strengthen? So, that classification up front and that transitional coordinator in the back were also two pluses. You don't see them, again, unless you're there, but they have helped individuals who come into our center. So, we're not just a holding pen, but we're a place where individuals can be helped. So, I think that was another big accomplishment at the center that we also did.
One of the bigger things, I think, and like you say, Laura and Jennifer and Corey, it's what we do for the community, what the council does for the community. So, I think one of the biggest accomplishments we've had, we've had many, many, but would be Tillman Island. Okay, Tillman Island, everybody knows it'd been going through a very good hardship, okay? So, they have, for the last couple of years, we've done a lot of meetings down there. We've really stepped up to the plate and one of the things that me and Dirk have been in many meetings down there and really advocated to keep that school open. So, I really thought that was a big part of a community situation, that the council stepped up and really tried to help them. The other big thing is they lost their bank. And I think I'm very proud that the council made steps to get them a state-of-the-art kiosk and ATM machine that is going to be a virtual type of ATM that's going to have a, virtual teller, yeah, that's going to have somebody there for five days a week. So, that's huge for that community. So, the other big thing was the community of Bosman and Nevett, to try to get them funding to get them sewer to help that community. I mean, that to me is huge. So, not only for them, for the environment, for everybody. So, we've really been a really good team that I've been experiencing for my three and a half years and, you know, with Dirk and Corey and Laura, they've really been a big part of everything that we've tried to get done here. So, and the other thing that Mr. Pack done, and I commend him with that, was the opioid stations, safe stations, and that was with help with Joe and all that. So, it's a, it's a big deal. So, we've done a great job with that. Thanks.
Currently, I have done a lot of public service in Talbot County. I'm serving on the board of the Old Growth Forest Network, which is preserving a forest in every county across the United States, of which there are 2,370 counties. There are several other counties, almost over 3,000 actually, that don't have a forest. But I've helped to lead their strategic planning sessions as the president of this national organization. It's very important to me to preserve those forests because they provide clean air, clean water for us. I have been involved with Master Gardeners, these are county organizations, that goes out and actually works with residents on best practices that help the Chesapeake Bay's health. That is a very, a big interest of mine and is also involved in the Metro River Keepers. As it relates to our farming community, the work that we did while I was on the board and it continues with Metro River Keepers, is that we've worked collaboratively with the farmers. It's really important. I don't like regulations. I don't want to layer more and more regulations in. When I went in the noise ordinance hearings and the STRs, the short-term rental, we don't have the funds nor the interest and the energy to just layer on more regs. Let's work together cooperatively as a community and let's figure out how we can set things up so that we can be more effective in the things that we're doing. I'll end with that.
All the basic organizations, Lions Club, Elks Club, Bryan Brothers Foundation, members of all of those. The two organizations that I support are really the teachers. You know, I think about my mother being a retired teacher, my kids being in school. First thing I did when I was looking at the budget, thinking about this, I called Andy Burke, who's the head of the teachers' union. We went out to Panera Bread, had a cup of coffee, talked about what the teachers needed, separately from the administrators, and talked about the budget, what needs and wants that they had. Then realizing that I needed somebody who had a good grasp of the budget, I reached out to Ted Doyle from the Taxpayers Association and I sat down, got some information from him, and then basically enough over a Manhattan on the third floor of the pub, I was able to get those two groups together. And we sat down, looked at a budget plan that they had, that the Taxpayers Association wrote. It's a great plan. I love it. It's a very low-tax plan. And the teachers endorsed it. And putting that, those two groups together, that, I don't know if they ever sat in a room together without punching each other. It was fun watching the digs that they would throw back and forth, but watching those two groups come together where you've got the ones who really want to keep the taxes low, you've got the teachers who want and need as much money as they can possibly get, endorsing one deal was amazing success and something I'm proud of. And those are the two groups that I would support most heavily going forward.
I am for short-term rentals in Talbot County, if that's the question. Mary Kay Vertary and her team are working on a redraft of our short-term rental legislation or policy, if you would. We're going to re-engage our short-term rental board, which has been somewhat defunct over the years. We're also going to hire a compliance officer, whose one of his duties or her duties will be to go out and be proactive with the short-term rental applicants around the county, not just being reactive and waiting for the complaint, but being proactive and going out and making sure that those things are in place. We need to have a bit more oversight over the short-term rental process and how we manage that. If you look at the number of complaints in comparison to the number of short-term renters that we do have countywide, they're very small. I guess probably between 1 and 1.5 percent. So, those persons who are in the short-term rental business, who are taking properties and renting those properties out, are doing it the right way. They're being respectful of the neighborhood, they're making sure they do their background checks for persons who are coming into the property, they're making sure they're being responsive if there are complaints. That's what we want, is that 1 to 1.5 percent that are not doing it the right way, that we need to tighten down the screws on. So, don't throw the baby out with the backwater, as mom used to say. Those who are not doing it the right way, get them in compliance or guess what, pull the license. So, that's my position on it.
I'm for short-term vacation rentals. My experience with it, I'm a member of the Talbot Ride and Gun Club. We have some international shoots that go on every year. We always end up booking a couple floors of the hotels in town. It's during the holidays, or the wedding season, the hotels are packed here and it's amazing. This is a beautiful wedding venue. The hotels fill up quickly. And what we do is we use those for the referees and we're putting grown adults into nice houses, showing off the beautiful area that we have, and it's a great way for us to show off what we have. When you look at the price points of these places, it's not a bunch of kids coming in throwing parties. It's a great opportunity for us to bring in more tourism to this beautiful area that we have. So, I'm for them.
I'm for it, too. I mean, we've worked really hard in the last year and Mary Kay and the planning commission, they've had over, it's like 50 meetings on these, on this stuff. So, they've worked really hard at it. I think we've got it to a point where everybody can live with it because it has been some, some... I think we've got it to a point where everybody can live with it because it has been some balancing act on trying to get everybody together and all the realtors. So I'm for it and I think we've got it in a good spot right now.
I too am for it, for primarily the same reasons you've already heard. There are an awful lot of people who buy second homes in this county, and the only way they can afford to do so is by renting them part of the time. The county has fallen down on enforcing the law that they had on the books, and that's what we need to do. Out of the 160-some registered short-term rentals, we've only had two or three that have had major complaints against them. And we should have stepped up and enforced our code right away, and we didn't. So we're now making adjustments. We're putting together a very strong short-term rental board. We have hired, or are in the process of hiring, a code compliance officer who will help us with that, who will be available nights and weekends. And we're looking at doing that. We've also engaged with a company that monitors short-term rental ads on the internet. And part of the reason for that is one of our requirements is that if you have a short-term rental in the county, you have to post your license number in your ads. So this is a way that we will be able to find those 150, 160, 200 others that are out there that we know are renting their properties, but we're not, number one, collecting an accommodations tax on, and number two, we're not monitoring in any way. So there's another step that the county has taken to make sure that the short-term rental industry in the county is done appropriately so that all can enjoy it.
So I'm for short-term rentals, but I don't want to hurt the neighborhoods. And that's what we've heard so much, is that the people next door to you, you don't know who they are. So I think all of the enforcement things are key because, again, half of them are licensed and half of them are not. I think that once we get the enforcement in place, I think we might actually see some of the complaints go up. Because people are probably like, why would I complain if there's no enforcement behind it? So I think over the next year, once we get through the zoning code update, we will see really the reality of what's out there and how people are. What we don't necessarily want is people that are just second homeowners, that's fine, they're here part of the time. I certainly would prefer people who have some roots in Talbot County or at least part-time for somebody just to come in maybe and buy 10 houses just to rent them out. I think that could start to destroy neighborhoods. But we do have, you know, tourism is so important and I think it has a place. I think collecting that accommodations tax is key and that getting that permit number out there is really, really important. So as long as it doesn't start hurting neighborhoods, because there are some real stories that will just break your heart, and we need to make sure that we're listening to those people as we go through the next year or two, make sure that we're doing it right.
I sat in on several of the meetings, especially toward the end. And one thing that I must say is thank you to all of the people on the Planning Commission and also a separate Noise Ordinance Commission that really sat and listened to all the complaints. There were many people that came up and complained. Some actually were also very supportive of it. And so I think that the Commission did an excellent job of hearing all of the citizens out. And I commend you all for actually appointing that to make sure that that process was handled well. And it's not yet decided. In fact, the Planning Commission turned it over to the Talbot County Council. They actually, the initial review held 49 meetings. Now it will be in the hands of the Talbot County Council. So this is actually a perfect question to be asking because you want to know where people stand on it. I believe personally in property rights. I think that, you know, we are Americans and we're able, we should be able to do with our property what we'd like to do with our property. However, I also believe in the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. And I would very much hope that if someone is renting a property, especially, you know, we think, think about it, if you're having someone rent a property next to you, and Laura's point about community is something very near and dear to my heart, you don't want the disruption in your community. You fear for safety because of people maybe coming in that you're not even knowing who they are. And there's a lot of things that might go through your mind. I do hope, and I do think though, that it might be the bad apple syndrome, where maybe there's been two or three complaints that have made for this big disruptive concern. However, I also feel for the people where it has been an issue next door to them. I really do. And I think that, like I mentioned earlier, enforcement, to layer on another level of enforcement is difficult because when you have enforcement, that means our police force is taken away from other important things as well. So thank you.
All right, let's simplify. Let's just talk about the tax revenue cap. The education is half of our budget, and there is a maintenance of effort law, which might be what you're referring to, and that was passed in 2012, which allows you, counties who have a tax revenue cap, to do an education supplement, which we have done, I believe, four of the last six years to the tune of 7.5 cents, which is about 15 percent increase in your property tax rate, which is significant. And that's all gone to education. So we have definitely supported education in a big way, millions and millions, I think it's, oh gosh, $4 or $5 million above where it was before, actually probably more than that after this year's budget. Okay, so in March, I proposed what I have lovingly referred to as the price penny plan, trying to figure out a way to escalate our base for a few years and adding a penny a year for four years to your property tax rate. And for the average homeowner, who has a $350,000 house, that would equate to a $35 increase on your property tax bill each of the next four years. Originally, I had, and we all think we should get rid of CPIU, so let's just get that out of the way now, because that's just a silly thing that has nothing to do with, it's Consumer Price Index, has nothing to do with government spending. I had originally put out just 2 percent plus the penny a year for four years. In listening to the Taxpayers Association and that they were willing to go up to 2.5 percent, so I changed that, so that's going to add another $1 million a year. And by the way, I did print everything out. It's in the back along with spreadsheets, because I love spreadsheets. So what it does is it makes a small increase, it escalates it over the first four years so that we can raise the base. Because, think about it this way, if you've got $1,000 in the bank and you have $2,000 in the bank, 1 percent means a lot more when you have more money in the bank. So it's not a static number. So as you go up each year, as you add to your taxable base, it gets bigger and bigger. So your 2 percent starts meaning more, your 2.5 percent starts meaning more. So that's why you don't need to keep doing the penny beyond four years because we've risen, raised our base. And that is why I think that it will work very well.
It's a little confusing to me. I think part of it was about why we were willing to go above maintenance of effort. And I think one of the reasons is when you look at where Talbot County stands in the state, our students are funded less than any other school system, by over $2,000 per student. In order for the county to even come in average, in the midpoint in the entire state in school funding, we would have to literally add $9 million to the school board's budget. And that's just to put us in the middle of the pack, not even to put us at the top. There's absolutely no way we can do that. As we've referred to before, the school funding formula from the state is really out of whack. It's very convoluted and it penalizes Talbot County. We get less dollars per student than any other county in the state from the state. The county last year was the number five highest county in the state in per pupil funding. And we still are way below, at the very bottom of the pack of any other county. And to me, it's unfair for us to penalize our students because the state penalizes them. We've got to take the upper road. We've got to say the state formula is wrong. We've got to fight that battle in Annapolis. But in the meantime, we can and shouldn't deprive our children of a better education than they're getting. And like it or not, they need more money to have that education. The reports that have come out recently about how to improve schools, just, the United States school system is in the middle of the pack of all industrialized nations. We're no longer at the top by any means. And in this country, Maryland's in the middle of the pack. So is that really what we want for our kids? We want them in the middle of the middle? One of the biggest things that has been shown is the sooner you get to these children, the sooner you provide them with education, whether it be pre-K and having a sufficient number of elementary school students, it enhances their ability to learn in later years. So that's the reason we did what we did.
I guess if the question is regarding the budget and why we, why I supported the increase, I'm a product of public education, my kids are a product of public education. Two of our three children went to school and graduated here in Talbot County. And I felt that the school system, their budget that they presented to the county council was a real needs budget. It wasn't based on things that they were adding in. I think their request came in around $41 million and some change. We ended up somewhere around $40 million, .6. So we brought 97.3, married somewhere in that neighborhood, to a fully funding the budget. So we didn't fully fund the budget, but we did put money back into the budget through three sources. One is the non-reoccurring $832,000 into what's called a non-reoccurring payment, which means that that payment does not show back up in your maintenance of effort, FY19. The state did approve that. The second was a 0.5 percent increase onto the education supplement, which brings in another $323,000. And the third was a draft from our capital fund of $975,000 to give you a total of $1.9967,000 going towards the school. So not quite fully funding the school, but getting the school the additional funds that they needed to keep the programmings in place, to keep the teachers in place, to keep the buildings maintenance. So yes, I felt that it was time, as Ms. Williams just eloquently explained to you, the funding formula that the state has in place penalizing Talbot County for the wealth that we have in the ground. Not the wealth that we have in our pocket, but the wealth that we have in the ground. So we can't change that funding formula, we can jump up and down and scream and yell about it, but we have not been successful in changing that. So it is our responsibility as your elected officials to take care of our schools and our students as best we possibly can. So that's why I made the decision, that's why I was part of the decision that was made to increase the funding.
Yeah, I was part of the decision too, to support the schools too. So, you know, like, it was a tough one when you're dealing with that maintenance effort because once you, once you do that, everybody understands you got to do that every year. So that's really the tough thing and psychological thing that you have to look out for the things in the future for the county because we have so many capital projects going on for the next, you know, 10 years. So we've got a new sheriff's department, we're going to have to do, we've got a new health department. But at the end of the day, I think, like Mr. Pack was saying, when it comes to the teachers, I think it's our responsibility as county council to take care of these schools. So I was for it. I hope that everybody was okay with it. But when you, it's very, very hard to make all these decisions up here because you've got, you've got two parties. And just like Mrs. Williams said in one of our open speeches, you have to come together and you have to work together. And a lot of times, you know, you try to do the best you can to balance it all out. So that's what.
So it was a twofold question, and I answered on the property tax revenue cap and not on the schools. So if I could answer the questions about the funding of the schools, I'd appreciate it. That's okay. Our original proposed budget was $1.7 million more than last year above maintenance of effort. We also had $800,000 in the non-recurring. The interesting thing is that was a half a million dollars that was in their operating, the things like the laptops and technology, that was pulled out of their operating and put in non-recurring. And let's be honest, those laptops are coming back every year. So they actually, in my mind, had $2.2 million extra in their operating with the budget as proposed. And when we got to that final vote, and it's not a half a percent, it was 2 and 1/2 cents because we had, the budget as proposed was a 2 cent educational supplement, which equates to 4 percent increase in your property tax on top of what we had already done, and then another half a penny. So you're getting 2 and 1/2 cent educational supplement, but the big problem, the thing that I really had a problem with, was pulling money out of the down payment for the $50 million school. Talbot County's on the hook for over $30 million. We had all agreed in advance that we were going to put $5 million down on that school to save us $400,000 a year in interest. And the major problem I had, and by the end of the day, I was up to $2.9 some million more than last year. And coming out of the capital fund, coming out of the down payment, I think was the wrong way to do it. I will fight like heck next year to put that $800,000 back to fully fund our $5 million down payment on the school because it's very expensive. Thanks for letting me answer that.
Wrong question. As a resident of a community that has suffered devaluation because of the absentee owner of the golf club at Easton Club, I have concerns about absentee ownership of the STR. Would each candidate for the county council comment on his or her position on absentee ownership?
The Easton Club is in a town, number one. And the county, we have no jurisdiction over that, that's a town matter. So to that, I can't weigh in on. So if it's regarding the Easton Club and what's happening there, this question is probably best, Mr. Leshaw's not here tonight, it's probably best served to go to one of the town county representatives. I think we did answer the question regarding short-term rentals. We do have some things we're putting in place, but it's our short-term rental re-board as well as our short-term rental compliance officer. And as I said before, that person would be more proactive than he has in the past, Ms. Williams alluded to, and we admittedly so, that we have not been doing a good enough job in getting out and making sure that those short-term rental applicants are doing what they should be doing. Overwhelmingly, 98 percent are doing it the right way. So we don't have a huge problem here, but that 1%, 2%, as I said, the bad applicants pull the bunch. So we got to make sure that we are addressing those problems with, the problems that we're having with short-term rentals. But I don't think anyone more can answer that question, Mike.
I think I alluded to that with those who live here and have a second home and they're here part of the time and they have, they're invested in our community. And I think what the writer may be referring to, to me, there's somebody who's invested in the community and someone who's just an investor in the community. And I think that's what it is in keeping neighborhoods. And I know Lisa talked about property rights, and I wanted to echo that because, yes, in theory, you should be able to do whatever you want with your property, but if that starts infringing on the person next door, then we have, if we're forced to choose between those two people, I know I will always side with the person who's living here full-time, who's not only paying their property tax, but they're paying their income tax hopefully, and they're volunteering in our community. And I think that's, that's what they're referring to, is the people who just are buying it just to make money and they don't really a part of our community. And I think that's, that's the difference and maybe what they're referring to.
And I think there are two things that came up in the last meeting, but would be something that the council should consider when they're looking at the final decision on this. The first is, when you buy a home in a community, it's private property. It's not commercial, it's not zoned commercial. Now, in renting a home, the law considers that being privately owned, not commercial property. So there might be a way that, or that if, like Laura just suggested, if someone is buying investment properties to turn around and rent and changing the, really the mix of the community, the culture of that community, that when someone looked at it, said, I love this community, I want to be a part of it, but didn't realize later on someone might be buying investment property. So I think that's something that needs to be considered. The second thing is, is that came up in the very last meeting, I found very, an interesting consideration is cost. When you have a long shared driveway, it costs about $10,000, depending upon the length and all that, but it costs about $10,000 or so every five or six years to re-gravel, repair, repair the crown of the road so that the water runs off appropriately. And that's to maintain it at a high standard. Okay, if you've got renters coming in, in your next door, going back and forth, and people that are driving, not with the consideration that you as members in your community would, you have an additional cost. So I just think those are a couple of things that should be considered when evaluating this for a final time. Thank you.